Six o'clock, we'll go ahead and call the regular school board meeting for the month of June to order. First item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Only amendment we had was to add a new hire in, I think you guys all got that email about Karen Curley, so.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda as amended, adding the hire of Karen Curley.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, item number three on our agenda is our spotlight on education, our ISASP testing, and we have some really exciting news tonight. Jen, if you want to kind of kick us off, or, sorry.
Nope, that's okay, okay. Yes, we had several students, a few students earned a perfect band score on their ISAS, which is the statewide assessment. That's a huge honor and accomplishment, and so we want to make sure that we recognize those students today. So, we have a little certificate for you, so Steve's going to call your name up, and you can shake the hands on the board, and then if you'd stay up here, I want to get a picture of you at the end, too.
Right.
Much appreciation for these students for working hard and earning this honor, it's a really, really big deal, so very proud.
Yeah, really, really excited, anytime you get a perfect score on a state testing is a pretty amazing accomplishment. We do have one person who's not here, he's playing baseball, Kyle Pasker isn't here, so I think he got some recognition already. So first one we'll have up is Imogen Melroy. Smart cookie, way to go. Alright, just stay up here, perfect. Cora Elsburn. Great job. And Carter Crane. Alright, we're going to have the three of you guys stand right here, if you would, you guys put right, you guys got to be front and center.
Turn the certificates around.
Oh, John, how's that feel?
Great job, guys. Yeah, it's exciting stuff, thanks everybody for coming and being here, really proud of you. See y'all. Alright, we'll keep moving forward, item number four are consent items. Bills were approved for this month?
Yes.
I assume, John, you had that, alright. We had another healthy, healthy slew of first policies. Any questions you want to dive into?
I do, there was a few in there. Jen, with changing some of the, I guess, the jobs, putting them all on you and taking them from other people. Is there a reason, or can we maybe keep the designee language in there, so you're not having to do all of the things that they say you're supposed to do?
I appreciate that question. So yeah, I did some digging, it kind of started with Lynette and I talking about some of the financial things and approval of purchases and things like that being. The wording from IASB has the superintendent identified as in every, in all areas, like there's some technology ones and some finance ones. So I did reach out to IASB, and I heard back from Shabon, she's their attorney there. And she had said that the IASB originals, none of them ever had or designee, it's always been superintendent. And so she said that she's assuming at some point locally, we threw in the designee, which is completely fine to keep, she said. So that was something, if we want to talk about that, and you guys are okay with keeping the or designee, that steps outside of the IASB that we're aligning to. But it's with their blessing that we could do that, if you guys are okay with that, in those instances where the or designee is mentioned in current policy, that we would keep that. But make the other changes that IASB recommends.
I've always been comfortable, because that still says by your delegation of that, you still hold the authority, you've just delegated that to the person of your choosing.
And when Lynette and I were talking, too, like if you remove that designee part, you know, when you think about approval of purchases, really Lynette needs to be in that loop, that has to be. And it's not that I don't know when there's approvals going on, or that, you know, but it's just that it's good to have actually several eyes on it, and people in the know what's going on. I think the concern that I had when I brought it to her was without, without me being in that loop then, she would have to approve every purchase order.
Yeah, that's where my mind goes.
And, and no offense to her, she shouldn't have the knowledge that I have, as far as are they in the right codes, and do we have the money? And, you know, she doesn't need that in-depth for every single purchase order that comes through.
I would be okay.
That's leaving the designee part.
Absolutely.
And again.
Surround that, okay.
In her defense, I mean, if there's anything out of the normal, we talk about it. You know, either whoever's buying it has already gone to her, or me, and then I go to her, you know, so we don't have, you know, secrets, so to speak. But we don't have, you know, we don't have any non, non-knowns, unknowns, I guess is a better word than non-known, unknowns.
In the first policy listed, the 602 category for curriculum development, in there, well, two questions I think I had. One, it said a lot of steps that we do, I just kind of wanted some confirmation that we felt confident we have a process that covers all of those, first of all.
Yes.
I'm assuming that's.
Yep, part of that flow chart in the.
In that link that you had there for the evaluation.
Yep, and a lot of it, the state helps with some of those, when we talk about looking at the latest thinking, the trends, the research. There's ed reports is what is the most commonly used, that you kind of vet your resources against, to make sure that they're evidence-based, that they have some credibility. And the state helps kind of point us in those directions, too, so that helps. The standards and looking at desired behaviors, teaching learning, those types of things, those all come out through that flow chart. And then we would use this when we are going through major adoption. So like next year, when we're doing, when we are looking to purchase K-12 ELA materials or reviewing that, we'll use that flow chart that was linked in there, and that's kind of where this falls under, too. So it's not that we would be using that, like we haven't used it this year, because we haven't had, we haven't been under review for anything at this point. But that's what we would, that's when that would come into play.
Well, and it said in there, we do, you have to do an evaluation every five years, is that what I remember reading?
Yeah, so we have.
Where, I mean, are we at the beginning, at the end of that cycle, like?
Both, a little bit, so Matt and I are trying to get a rotation, because you also want to have some spacing, so we've been.
There's different components of it, okay.
Yeah, so like we would do, you know, like ELA would be next year, so then you would kind of want to space math away, just for financial purposes even, too, so that you're not going under a major.
Overall at the same time, okay.
The year later doing another, because right now, we've been talking with Lynette, too, we know that next year, that's going to be expensive, so thinking about it with finances this year, that we're going to need to bank some to pay that big bill next year. So trying to space those out, so we've spent this year trying to determine when the subscriptions, licenses, whatever they are, when they come due. So like we know that Wonders for Lambert is going to come due at the end of next year, because we figure out that was purchased about five years ago, and licenses are about five to six years. So it just kind of depends, so this year, we've been trying to figure out where we fall, and what, what's going to make sense logically, moving forward to hit that five-year within each content area that they get looked at. So we have, kind of like our board policies, how we rotate through, get that going for.
Interesting, okay, thanks, thank you. And then I had a question, there's a number of policies here, if somebody wants to have some, you know, library items or curriculum items reconsidered. It says that we have a reconsideration committee that you've appointed, and I was just curious more, who have we appointed on that committee?
So.
Or is that an ad hoc thing you do if the situation?
You do it kind of once you get the, so I would, in my role, I would get the form from a building principal that someone has brought to them for reconsideration. Once I receive that form, I have a set time to convene a committee. And that committee, it has, I think it's two media specialists, two teachers, two parents, there's identified roles that you have to commit to, you can go beyond that, but you have to have these. There's, I think, two of three types of roles there. In my perspective, I would wait and see what the challenge is, if it's at the high school, then I want to make sure there's high school teachers on that committee. If it's elementary, I'd want to make sure there's elementary, so it's developed in response to.
On where the situation is, that makes a lot of sense, okay, thanks. I had one other question, I think actually Joe, probably you might be best to answer this one. I know we, there's a lot of policies in here about, you know, appropriate internet use, and I know a lot of that stuff is protected by the firewalls and things that you put up. Could you just, I just wanted you to be able to explain what kind of protections we have that keeps students from inappropriately using the internet, I guess.
So we have two different, one is our firewall, which we have to have actually by law, by doing E-rate, by getting our discounted internet. We have to have something in place that has us blocking it, so we have certain protections on that, that look for different sites or categories of sites, and that blocks it that way.
So if they try and access one of those, it automatically?
Yeah, and, I mean, we, we, I would say that's, that's been pretty strict, but there's always the one-offs that we find, and then we have to put in there. It's actually probably stricter, I'm probably more trying to remove stuff off of it than I am trying to add stuff to it.
Because it limits them to actually use the internet the way that it's intended, or things that would normally.
And that actually limits everybody, because it, staff, anybody who's using the internet, it would limit them on the firewall. And then they have GoGuardian on their Chromebooks that controls their internet usage on that, and so there's, there's also protections on that. Sometimes they hit that before they hit the, it goes back and forth, but then that takes them off campus, too.
If they go home and plug into the wifi.
Yeah, so the GoGuardian works through there, too. And then it's, if, normally it's kind of going off, I get certain notifications if certain things are hit on their GoGuardian, so then I can go in and increase or remove stuff based off that. And, or I can, or I can take it off if they're doing something for a class, sometimes they do stuff in the class, and then it does that. But that GoGuardian also allows teachers, when they're in class, they can see what they're doing on their Chromebooks, too.
Great. Thanks, appreciate it. Anyone else?
I thought the curriculum sections were pretty comprehensive.
Yeah.
Purpose, process, involved.
Yep. Yeah, I think that's one area, I agree with you, Carl, that's the one area over time I just want to get smarter about. That's probably one thing, just from a board visibility, the things you guys are doing, it's less to have an opinion on it, and more just to be educated.
Yeah.
On what's going on, and when you're going through areas, and just to understand it better, would be helpful. That's good. Any questions?
I move that we approve the consent items.
I'll second.
Second, all those in favor?
Do you need, do you need a approval for A through C, E through H, leave me out of D, because Christie is in.
You can just, you can probably just abstain on.
I'll just abstain from.
Abstain on item D.
That's fine.
Okay, that's a good point. All those in favor?
Aye.
I abstain from.
Staying on D.
Little deep.
Perfect.
Well, that's going to take some work.
That's not in the button, the quick click button.
It's not the quick click, I can get it.
You could probably have him just abstain from all consent.
I could abstain from all.
Just abstain from all consent items is probably the easier action.
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Alright, thanks for making my life easy.
Alright, we'll move on to item five announcements and communications, comments from the public, should be kept to three minutes, and we can only act on things in the agenda. Any comments from the public? Move on to item B, Friends of Music, can you report?
Friends of Music organization held their monthly meeting Wednesday, May 28th, at 6:00 PM in the High School Commons. New leadership was elected into office, Julie Sleeper as the president of the Friends of Music organization, with the retention of Jamie Jolly as treasurer and Lori Cartman as secretary. I think right now, they're kind of assessing the hardware and some of the auditorium needs. So the, if I understand correctly, the LED lights that they have are aged, so they're looking at that. The, the main curtain, I guess, at one time got wet, so it's lost its fireproof capability, so they're a little concerned with that. The, some of the auditorium equipment is, you know, it's not horrible, but it's getting old, the main speakers, it'd probably be replaced. The pit floor, the panels that are on the stage that come over the pit, need, need some attention. And they've got sort of a wish list of putting a ladder on the crew box, so in the back of the auditorium that you have your back against, they've got the light operators, and they're looking for maybe an easier access. A ladder of something, something like that, instead of coming up and down a fireman's ladder. So I think this summer, they have a couple of discussions, I think they have a, an inspection maybe in July, so they're going to talk a little bit more about that. And I think they're going to just keep the district sort of apprised of what, what, what's on the list, and then to start the conversation, you know, what, what, what do they need to do? And, you know, money stuff. But, you know, this fall, we've got another great musical that we're going to hopefully approve tonight. And then the starting, the beginning catalyst for the New York City trip is happening now, and so there'll be a fair amount of discussion on that moving forward. Sometimes it's kind of a breakout session with that Friends of Music meeting, as the New York City fundraising event takes place, so.
Lots of activity.
Be prepared for the, I'm told the toilet is making rounds again, so. Next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, June 18th, at 6:00 PM in the Commons again. Thank you.
Thanks. Athletic?
They did not meet, they're kind of hanging out to wait for approval of the shed at football field, or at Brownfield there, and see what, kind of talk with Matt about that at the next meeting.
Okay. And academic?
We met or exceeded what we had last year for the school things for the kids.
The grants.
No, yeah.
Supply.
Oh, the school supplies.
The school supplies, and so that was good, and then they are on hiatus until August now.
They get the summer off, too, that's great.
Yep, we get, we need to lie off, but we'll be back together on August.
Great, thanks. Okay, with that, we'll move to item six, second reading of policies. I know you said you mentioned a few things that you adjusted in there, right?
Last month, one of the, it was about reporting progress to parents, and there was the wording that said something about students performing poorly, so we were looking at changing that. So we just, instead of performing poorly, we'll notify parents of students not making adequate progress, is the, the new terminology that we came up with for that. And then the graduation requirements, we talked about that, they're updated to reflect the state requirement changes, to keep us in compliance there. And then the weapons in the district, just the option, that optional part, if you have staff that carry weapons in school, which we don't, so that's not applicable to us.
I will move to approve the second reading of policies.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Move forward. Motion carried, alright, next we'll move to our administrator and director reports. And maybe before we jump into the reports, I just wanted to take a minute and recognize, this is Mr. Felderman's last meeting with us, as he'll be, he'll be moving off to his new role as superintendent at Anthony Dumont. We're all really happy and proud of him, just thinking back to the last number of years, a lot of the things you've put in place, really impressed with, with what you've done. And just wanted to take a minute and recognize you, and publicly say thank you, and invite anybody else who has any other thoughts or things they want to add to it, can jump right on.
Yeah, we just, I think, want to wish you the best of luck, you know, I think I told you one time, it's kind of, it was a double-edged sword, we're happy for you, but we're sad to see you go as well. But, and thanks for your board reports over the years, and making sense of what 1.2 means, and 1.1, and all of that stuff. Oh, I get a, do I get one, or? Yes.
That's your going-away part.
We, I wish you the best. I think over the last number of years, it was, it's been really enjoyable as a board member, you know, interacting with you in board meetings. You're very calm, good calm demeanor, and you did a very good job during the dark ages of COVID, where, you know, that was a very stressful time, and the high school students were quite, quite stressed by it. And you did a spectacular job, so you will be missed, and I wish you the best as well.
I'm very happy for you and your family to be able to experience back to central Iowa, God's country. Anyway, you've done, you've done a tremendous job growing, you know, growing this high school, and, you know, the, the, you know, the effort you've put in has definitely shown, and we really appreciate it.
Congratulations and good luck. Been to Hampton-Dumont once for a football game, so at least I know where it's at.
Well, thanks, Tim. Now we're going to ask you a bunch of questions about your board report. Anything you wanted to share? We can give you the microphone, make sure you get the microphone there, any, not to put you on the spot, but any parting comments or thoughts you want to share.
Thank you, first of all, to the board, a lot of things that schools try to strive to achieve is because of the support of school board and the shared vision. You lay the groundwork for what we do every single day, and hopefully, we've succeeded in the mission that you've set for us. So thank you for setting that groundwork, we deeply appreciate that.
Did I see a plaque over there for level one?
We were, it said in board report, we were waiting final approval, so this did come to the, well, it is official, you're now one of 10 high schools in the state of Iowa that are HRS level one certified. As I mentioned to Mrs. Vance before, the next goal, of course, would be level two, and it'd be nothing sweeter, it'd be one of two schools to be certified for level two. And I think the high school is well on their way for effective teaching in every classroom, which is level two, so.
Awesome, cool. That's great. Alright. So into board reports. Jen, thanks for putting in the, the update on lots of legislative stuff going on right now.
And I know there were more signed on Friday that were not signed yet when I updated that, so what you have now is already on date, but I'll keep you guys updated on that. And we're looking forward to usually IASB, SAI, all the statewide groups will put out some sort of comprehensive, this is what it means. all the statewide groups will put out some sort of comprehensive, this is what it means for you. We'll get the primer from IASB, which will help us get our policies in line with legislation. We have a webinar in a couple of weeks with always cooning, right? But we'll go over that topic, so we have lots to do between now and whenever the implementation dates are set.
I think we should all be thanking Luke for Senate File 660 and your contribution to the sports wagering bill.
You saying that I lose?
Thanks for your donation.
You're welcome.
Keep up the good work.
He's got at least half of that in there.
I got a question on that civic test requirement. If they don't pass, do they have to come back and take it again or what's the criteria for them? If they don't pass it, what's the? Do we have a plan for the kids that possibly couldn't pass it?
Yeah, they say that there's gonna be modifications in accommodations, cause you think about students with learning disabilities and things like that and they haven't even, we don't know the format of the test yet, whether it's all multiple choice. So there's a lot of details yet that we don't, we don't have, other than the fact that there is a test that they say it's expected to pass, so to me it means we're gonna have to find a way to, you know, whether it's restart them, trying to take it their sophomore year, so we've got plenty of time, what the preparation for that looks like, there'll probably be some test prep, make sure that the standards we've identified locally are the ones that align with that. So I think we'll probably, we'll be having lots of conversations to figure out what that looks like. But the way I interpret what's, what we have right now is that they need to be able to pass. And if they're gonna, you know, set thresholds about if a student's on alternative assessment, if they're exempt or, you know, if they're gonna provide any exemptions, we don't know that yet.
That is my turn.
Can we make, make it an open book test for the kids?
Maybe, yeah, yeah.
I mean, is it up to the, the school districts to do, or is it gonna be a, I see it says department education. Is it gonna be just a blanket test and every school's gonna get that test?
I would anticipate that it's gonna be something like that, that there'll be pretty strict policies and as far as facilitating it and things like that, that since it's statewide, that they'll keep that pretty lockstep from district to district and not allow for much local choice, but I don't know that for sure, that's just what I'm guessing.
Two years, right, two years to prepare, it's not like next year.
Yeah, I think we've got 26.
Time to get prepared for it.
Yep, yep.
No questions, Jen, but I do like the strategic planning thing in there. It's good to just kind of as, you know, it's thought out, granted it, you know, next, next September through December seems like a long ways away, but a lot, looks like a lot is getting done from now until then. So just being able to see that was good.
Made some notes of things that I didn't necessarily lay out very clear, but when we go, the admin team next week, we're going to the Four Dimensions conference and we'll come back from there with a better idea of our building goals so that we'll be able to look at our district goals in July as well and have that conversation, your goals for me and things like that. And then I also had put as a note to remember to say tonight, you know, when you look at that December to February, it's talking about priorities and goals, that, I'm anticipating that goal conversation to be like our three to five year. What are our long-term goals through the strategic plan, knowing that our one-year goals will have been set already. So I don't want you guys to think that we're gonna wait until December to set goals for this year, we'll get that done earlier. But those, the goals mentioned there in that phase three would be more looking long-term.
Looking more at that long-term vision and where we're headed and stuff, okay, that's good. No, I agree with Jamie, I just, I appreciate just kind of sharing your thought process of how you're planning to go through it. And I think as we go through each one of your phases here, that'll be good, every quarter or so is you kind of update through that phase. I'll be really excited kind of to track along the journey with you. And then you put in here kind of the board action plan and that's maybe what you were just referring to, that's probably, is that what your view is, we'll be looking to update in July a little bit or do a refresh on this in July, is that your thought?
In here, this was kind of the wrap-up for this year, so with the three areas that we identified last July, I just in that far right column, put some notes for an outcome.
Okay.
Some of it, you can see like the communication one, you can see social media analytics and things like that to have some concrete numbers too. Some of it, you know, the culture is the staff survey that I received and some feedback from there. And then just the academics, that one is a hard, that, we didn't really have a, there's not a data point to that necessarily, but I do think there's ongoing work that we'll continue to look at, you know, what the evaluation of our programming, looking for opportunities for challenging the academics and things like that. And so how, we have to figure out what that looks like in a year versus a long-term.
Oh, I was gonna say, cause you're kind of developing that long-term strategy and at the same time keeping goals in the short term, moving and connecting everything for all of us, so that.
So ideally in July, I'd like to come, you know, in the left where we have the goal one, goal two, goal three, kind of think about what are three priority areas that you guys would want me to be working on for next year and that's what we, I'd like to circle back to in July. So whether some of these continue, you think that they need to fall off and something needs to replace it, that's the conversation I think we'd be looking at.
Perfect, next. I think that'll be a good reference guide too, as we talk about our book.
Yes.
Discussion later, I think it'll help referencing back to that as well.
Sure.
In Matt's report, he had his update on the proficiency scores, I was curious, I know unfortunately he's out sick today, but just any thoughts or comments on, I mean, I can draw, I'm curious the conclusions that he or you drew from just evaluating the scores, where we are.
So I love looking at this stuff, I'm kind of a nerd, I guess, like that, but when you look at the packet that was in the paper, so I, if you notice the, looking diagonal is, I always talk about that being apples to apples, because those are the same kids. So when we look at that, I look at, there's basically 16 areas, two areas in each grade level, which gives us a total of seven, 16 opportunities for growth. And we demonstrated growth in 12 out of those 16 areas, which I thought was pretty impressive, that's the kids growing over time. Though, and then one of the areas that was marked as a decline was eighth to ninth and that was that ELA group, last year's eighth grade, this year's ninth grade in ELA going from a 92% to a 90%, so still operating at very high levels, even though it was a decline. So I want to point that out. Three out of our four areas were declining math, which to me is something that, that's kind of one of those things you want to look at and just think, okay, what are we seeing, is that a pattern, is that a, was that just at this time? And so that's something that we need to look at further. That eighth to ninth decline in both ELA and math, and again, that's something I want to look at, is that a pattern? When we go to high school, we know that transition points are tough for kids in testing and so is that something that we see or is that just to this, this group that happened to be the case? So we'll look at that. Science showed nice, theirs is different because we don't get that yearly, because they take it in fifth, eighth and 10th. So really I look at that one more on the horizontal and they showed nice, nice growth in eighth and 10th grade there when you look and then a slight dip in fifth, but when you look at our eighth graders, last year our eighth graders performed at 78%. This year's eighth graders were performing at 85%, meaning proficiency. And then that 73 to 82% jump for 10th graders as a trend, that's really good to see. And then the other thing that, well, I guess other three grade levels were at or above 90% in ELA. When you look at that seventh, eighth and ninth, we're all performing at very high levels in ELA.
94%.
Yeah. So those are some, we have some really, really strong pieces of data here that I am impressed with. I think they're, that, we're seeing some good things, we've got some, some things we want to do too, you know, things we need to work on. You see our third grade, that, that first year in the assessment, you know, we want to get that number higher.
Yeah, they continue, it's almost like that entry year is a struggle year from a testing and then they really rebound in the next year.
They do rebound, yep. And ultimately, that's what we want to see, you know, we see kids who are with us from year to year and, and when we look at that progression, kids are growing as they go through our system, which is a good indicator that our system is, is strong and working, not that we don't have things to improve on, but over, on the whole, when you look at kids moving through the system, they grow as they get further down the line. That entry's a little rough, so that's where we gotta think about what we can do to help with that.
That's always the one that's interesting to compare state data to see if that's happening.
Everywhere.
Everywhere with that.
And that was my last bullet point, Jamie, going right to that, is we're looking, we are excited to see how we compare the state averages. We'll get that in late July, is what they're saying, so we'll bring that back to you guys once we have the state average and so you can see, sometimes it doesn't really mean much and it's nice to have that context of where we're falling in comparison, so.
In the fourth grade level, what, we went down in ELA and math from 24 to 25, right? It looks like?
Well, same kids, they increased trend, if you go horizontal, they would be, they did decrease from horizontal. So like last year's fourth graders, 79% of them, this year's fourth graders, 70% of them met. So yet there was a decline, apples to oranges in that situation, yep, different kids.
Are they not getting what they need in second and third grade then, or what's going on?
I don't know, cause you look at.
Because when you go from third grade to fourth grade to fifth grade, there's that progression.
Yes.
But, you know, what's happening from second? I mean, are they just not mature enough yet or not? I don't know what.
You mean that incoming third grade, like what's, yeah, that's what we need to look at and see what, you know, when we look at our FAST scores, the ones you guys see, those are somewhat of an indicator, but don't always directly correlate to how a student will perform on the ISS. Some of it is that for, it's the first year they take it, so, you know, is it, are there some test prep things we can do to help them prepare a little more for the actual taking of the test? That's something we can look at and yeah, just figuring out why that third grade dip is there. We don't have anything to compare it to, so that's where they, they're entering. But when you see then, you look at last year's third graders, 63% of them met benchmark, this year as fourth graders, the 70% of them. So you see on the whole, that same group of kids grew seven percentage points there on the ELA side of things. Fourth grade, last year's fourth graders were at 79%, of them meeting proficiency went up to 83% as fifth graders. So those same kids performed better this year than they did last year. But it is that, that, looking at that third grade and trying to see how we can increase their starting point, something we'll be looking at.
Do we not teach seven, or science in seventh, sixth, seventh, ninth and 11th?
No, they only test three.
Oh, and they're just doing three times?
Yeah, the state test is only given on, in those three years.
Oh, in those three years, okay.
Yep, yep.
As a parent, I would find this confusing. As a, as a parent, if I was just looking at this graph, I would find it very confusing and have some questions, so.
And this, parents get an individual report for their student, they wouldn't necessarily have, we put this one for you guys to try to look at the horizontal, the trans horizontally and then following our kids through. But yeah, it is, it's a confusing graph to follow.
Colors help.
Yeah, colors are key. Rudy had a question on your FAST, you guys were just shy of your goal at 64, what did you start? Do you know what it was like before that, that you were trying to get to 70?
No, I don't, but.
I mean, was there improved, I mean, did you start below 60, I mean, what, there wasn't, it didn't go down? It just didn't get to your?
I mean, the scores, they were lower in the beginning of the year, but not a lot lower. I mean, everything's kind of steps along at the same rate, but.
Sure.
No, it was, wasn't what we want.
Yeah, I just was seeing what it started at, I guess, to.
I can, I can pull those numbers for you and get them to you.
Yeah.
Along those lines, anything, you know, nobody ever wants to not meet a goal, but you know, you already are, so. I guess just in retrospect, now that you've kind of seen what you did for the year, any kind of reflections of, now that we've lived through this last year, we want to do something different, we're gonna attack it in a different way? Just kind of curious your perspective.
You know, honestly, if you look historically at these scores, we're pretty much where we are, are every year. There's really not a lot of change and so we're at this point every year, Steve, we really are. And over my 14 years here, as, as we've had this journey, a couple of years ago, you've heard us talk about our letters training. And so Lambert teachers are 75% through that, it's a two-year program. So as we've been going through that training and focusing on the science of reading, we've been make, we're implementing changes and doing things differently as, as we're learning. But you know, that sounds a lot like building, you know, flying and building the plane at the same time. And there's a lot of that and part of that process too is identifying what are some things that we're doing that we shouldn't be doing anymore. So we're identifying those things and getting rid of those things and applying our new learning as well. UFLI, for example, is an example of that new learning, just a way of teaching letter sounds and combinations and different things like that. We're tweaking our Title I intervention and targeting students younger. I mean, that's a big part of the research too, is the, the early intervention. So there, there are those changes that are going on and will continue to go on as we have our new learning. And just trying to figure out how we can best identify those deficits and meet those deficits for our students, engaging more parents in the process as well, that's always a challenge. But it, it's like anything else, if you're gonna get better at it, you need more practice, you need more time. And so thinking about that too, I want you to hear from me, Lambert teachers are working extremely hard. And so as we think about that too, it's more than just about what we're teaching and how we're teaching, but are students engaged? And so we're having that conversation. Cause you can have the best teaching in the world in that classroom, but if a student isn't engaged in it, it makes no difference. So we're part of our building plan this year, we're implementing the smart classroom management system, which is all about focusing on engagement for our students. And so we think that'll be another layer of what we're doing to improve our teaching, to improve our instruction, but to make sure that students are getting all of that instruction that's being delivered to them.
Thanks for your perspective.
And with, you mentioned engagement, is there anything, obviously if you knew the answer, you wouldn't put it in the thing about engagement with families, is it, is there a mindset there with families where if their kids, if they're passing, it's not worth the time or it?
You know, it's a variety of things, I mean, you know, we're dealing with 500 families, you know, and so there's all kinds of answers. Some of the answers you get sometimes is, well, you know, a kid needs a summer off, you know, or they work hard all day at school, they get home, they need a break, you know, you hear things like that. I don't know how to illustrate it any better than maybe the answer to the question, why don't we do summer school anymore? And the answer to that question is, is the kids that need it weren't coming. And we had challenges too in getting people to staff it, you know, teachers work hard all year and they're looking for that break as well, but that was the biggest thing, is that the kids that really would have benefited from that extra instruction weren't attending.
Gotcha. Makes sense.
I do want to share this with you too, if I can, one of the things that, a conversation that we've had a lot at BLT and at Lambert is that, you know, our scores aren't where we want them and we're gonna keep working on that. But I want you to think about too, how are these kids doing when they go on? How are they doing when they get to middle school? How are they doing when they get to high school? And so when I think about that, I think our Lambert teachers are doing a pretty good job of building a foundation that is allowing our students to have the success they're having. Now, that doesn't mean we're not gonna stop working to make it better, but our kids are doing alright when they leave. But we think they could do better.
Thanks, Rudy, it's good perspective. Tim, in your report, I was looking across the, all the indicators that you surveyed on and how, you know, you, all the different progression and, and I guess, I was just curious just to get your perspective on, you know, the growth that you've seen in the building culture and your thoughts on kind of where's the next, where's the next area of focus in your mind?
Great question, cause that's, after we get our results and we're very pleased with our results, we always think in the background, what's our next stone that we need to move as a building? And you'll see there from indicator 1.6, it's having that parent aspect, making sure that our parents are more engaged in our process. If you look at some of the lagging indicators and leading indicators, Mr. Raskin, well, they're very specific and that kind of draws down some of our data. For example, one of the questions that's inside of 1.6 are do the administrators participate in virtual town halls? No, we do not participate in it, so obviously we're gonna have a lower score. But our overall data and that overall indicator area is extremely high. But our overall data and that overall indicator area is extremely high. Well, what that does speak to then is we need to get out there more, engage with our parents. Now, we've tried different things over the years of trying to help different events here at school, and we may have not the attendance rate that we want to have from our parents. But we also know that our message is getting out there too. Well, for example, I'm sitting at a Little League game on Saturday morning, and all the parents are talking about what their kids are going to be doing after high school, or what their plans are. And the conversation's changed from ten years ago. It used to be, let's all go to four-year. Let's all go to four-year. There's a lot more conversation now about, let's go into a two-year, or do we even need to have, what level of education do we need to put on vision?
Military, you have a lot more diversity there.
So it may not be that they're necessarily here and actively engaged, but the message is resonating outside of the building too. But there are some things that we could definitely work to improve upon. There's also some aspects of our overall culture that we know we need to work on. We've seen great, well, very similar to what Rudy said is, we are, with your data, we are very happy with where our data is, but we always have room to improve upon it as well. So for example, you remember the last five, six years, we've talked about students appreciating differences in others. This past year, we saw about a four percent growth from the low sixties to the high sixties. So we've got the breakthrough now. But we also know that our local community is becoming much more diverse in nature. So what do we need to do as a school system to reach out to those families, make sure that they feel like they're engaged in the process? So there are some things that we can, or some quick wins and all that, that all pass along. Making sure that our parents feel welcome, they're appreciative, wrapping them with a community of care, of all the resources that are within Delaware County, I think will help engage our parents too. And that's got trickle-down effect. Once they see that the adults have an empathy for other adults, I think that the students, the child sees that as well. And then that brings that back into the building as well. We have KMCH had a few kids, um, do some different bilingual advertisements the last couple of weeks. And so those have been out there too. So what do we do to meet people with where they are at, I think goes a long ways to improve the culture of the building as well?
Great. Appreciate it.
Joe, want to thank you for your report on the clarification on the teacher laptops and with the, the explanation on the new phone system. So thanks for that.
It's wordy.
Yeah, I got to read two books this, for this meeting.
Exactly. I hardly, I hardly make it past two-thirds a page.
No, but thank you very much.
It's a list normally.
Yeah, thanks for that.
Makes complete sense to me.
Uh, Jackie, could, could you explain on your last one, your building goal number three? I wasn't sure, the survey at the bottom that talked about favorable and favorable, could you just elaborate on that? I wasn't sure I understood what's the, what the positive response increase was about?
Yep, I'm going to open up the survey here. So basically what we do is, um, all of the staff, there, so the questions are, I observe that my students can recognize areas for growth, set realistic goals, and work towards accomplishing them while working with others. So we have moved on from communication in our twenty-first century to collaboration. Um, two years prior, we spent all on just like, uh, communication strategies, specifically, uh, CAGN strategies that they had been using. And now we're trying, now that they understand hopefully how to communicate to each other in a efficient, productive manner, which is very, uh, difficult at times for middle school students to do, um, with each other is not, then we moved on to collaboration. So the teacher is doing a reflection on their class, um, classes that they teach. And so another question is, I observe that my students identify their roles in supporting others to achieve group, group goals when working together. So it's really about the collaboration with the students in their classroom. So they-
More of their reflection on what their behaviors that they're seeing and, and the impacts of the strategy they're putting in?
Yeah, so like if they're, if they feel like their students are listening, sharing, and encouraging others. Um, so it's a, and then I can observe my students respect others' opinions without judgment. And it's on a one to four scale, never to always. And then, um, if they, the teachers reflect if they feel like they've improved the semester, or they've not improved since the first semester. So that is one, um, where we feel like next year, we're going to continue to work on those twenty-first century skills, but how can we incorporate with our social emotional learning? Because a lot of them cross-connect. And so we're really looking at how do we feel, um, Jen has really pushed us to not have so many goals, but like how to bring them closer together. So the teachers feel like it's not another thing on their plate. And so we're really excited to intertwine that with our SEL, because they're very closely aligned. So next year, we're, we will not be doing a twenty-first century goal. We're going to have it wrapped within our SEL.
Great. Questions? All right, we'll go ahead and move to item eight, old business. I don't have anything listed there. Uh, then item nine, A, uh, resolution for ordering the election, or the, uh, uh, election on the, continuing the levy for the PEPL. So I think we discussed this last time, that our PEPL comes up every five years.
So we have to do the voted every five years. Um, we talked about it last month. You guys agreed that we'll do an, um, we'll call a vote for September. It does take majority plus one, so fifty percent plus one. Um, Jen has reached out to the Donovan Group. They'll help us to get the word out. Um, I think the, the message we have to get out, this is the same as it's been since they started it. You know, we're not raising it, we're not changing taxes. Um, it's going to be exact same as just a renewal. And then we'll, part of our, um, information we'll get out is, is we'll look at, you know, what, what have we spent with this money, you know, and, and the types of things that helps us to have it. So we'll work with that as well. So this gets the ball going. Officially, it's a bonanza.
Officially calls for, uh, for us to put something on ballot.
Yep.
Any other questions about it, or?
I move that we approve the resolution.
I'll second.
All right, this is a roll call. Yep. Uh, Director Imslin.
Aye.
Director Johnson.
Aye.
Director Vaskey.
Aye.
Director Warden.
Aye.
Director Beasing.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes. Uh, item B, uh, additional non-bargaining unit salaries. I think we had a few additional items after, uh, after we finished evaluations and, and a few other cleanups that we needed to do that were listed here. Any questions anybody has about that? In line with everything else we were doing, so.
Yep. I'll move to approve the additional non-bargaining unit salaries for twenty-five, twenty-six.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Move forward. All right, item C, uh, our food service software agreement with Meal Magic. Sounds like a fun game to play.
Sounds magical. Was, was there a cost listed? Was it on the first page?
We had a dig. Yes, we did have to dig. There was no cost. We had to ask Kim, and Kim didn't have a cost in everything she had. I mean, they had talked about it verbally, but she didn't have anything written, so she got it for us. And so, yep, it is, uh, thir- three thousand one hundred ninety-five dollars annually moving forward. And then this year, there's a one-time setup fee of seven hundred ninety-nine on top of that. So, and that does come on a nutrition.
And it works with Power School.
And it works with Power School. Um, they viewed three or four different programs. So the one we use right now is, is going out of business. They're going to be done. So we have to do something. Um, and they did demos with three or four of them. Everybody kind of liked this. They had their kitchen, she had her kitchen managers and herself, um, reviewing them. They even took a field trip to Cedar Rapids schools because they use it, just to kind of see and talk to people. Um, got great reviews on it. Works with our system, works with RevTrack, which is, uh, how we collect our money for parent payments. So here we go.
Not as bad as I would have thought.
No, no.
I thought it would be more expensive.
It's not often we say that.
I'll make the motion to approve the food, food service software agreement with Meal Magic. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
She carried. Uh, move on to item D, uh, the contract with Dries Enterprises for the, uh, storage building at Brown Field. I know there's a bid process that we went through.
So this is small enough, we didn't have to do formal bids, but we ran the process kind of similar, other than we didn't do, you know, we didn't publicize it and print it. We gave it to all our local bidders, you know, people that would bid locally. Uh, reached out to a couple of others that, that bypassed it, said they're too busy anyway. They, um, Josh Demmer is with us, we're required to have either an architect or engineer, so we work with Josh. Um, they had a contractor meeting out on the site with, uh, Josh and Matt Weiss was out there with them, uh, to, you know, look over the site, figure things out. So we got our quotes in, uh, we opened those last week. We were hoping, I think we'll just be transparent, we were hoping to spend around a hundred thousand dollars. We do have issues because of the floodway. Um, we have to bring it up, uh, four feet above the floodway, or we have to bring it one foot up, which is kind of where it would be now, and then put the flood vents through. So there was some discussion back and forth. Um, it costs a lot of money to bring in dirt. We had a meeting this morning with Jen and myself and Josh and, uh, Matt saying, okay, long-term, let's talk long-term. Um, what's going to be best? And, and to cut to the chase, what we're asking or recommending to the board is to approve the contract, um, without the bathroom. So we did do a bathroom alternate. Um, just, just in case, I mean, not knowing, we did, we did a bathroom alternate. That came in roughly about forty thousand dollars. One bathroom is probably not worth forty thousand dollars at this point. So we would, after this, a lot of discussion, um, we're recommending to the board, uh, to still approve it. Booster Club is in for a committed forty thousand. Um, possibly more, they said, up to potentially fifty, depending on how the fall fundraisers go. Uh, but they're going to put a good chunk of that in as well. We do have money budgeted for it. Uh, so we're, we're okay on a budget standpoint, district-wise. Uh, we just need the storage out there. You know, we've got the machine that we have to take care of the field turf with. We have, um, now that we have soccer here, we have their goals, um, that are just, you know, getting stored outside right now. They don't have any room for storage. So um, we just need storage out there. And, and we talked about not doing it now, but if we don't do it now, at some point, we are, we are going to do it, and it's just going to keep getting more expensive. So, um, we feel that's the right thing. I will preface for all of us that have gone through this process in the past with construction, we have talked as a team, and we probably will be bringing a change order already for the next. Because we've opted not to do the bathroom, we would like to still stub it in. So that down the road, if we decide to, like now is the time to stub it in. He thought it would be maybe a cou- yeah, maybe a couple grand. Um, and so I told him that we would have the discussion, you know, that I would prep you for that, but that we will plan to bring a change order.
So the forty-two was to hook it up completely?
Completely, yep, yep. A functioning-
That would be my only concern, would be just do it now. And have it there, but-
I'm okay if they just rough it in, like have it, have it there, you can do it later.
As long as they're not scrapping it completely.
Yeah, no, the change will bring it- The change order that we'll bring next month would bring us, would bring all the plumbing in, so that if, you know, five years down the road, we decide to put in a bathroom, it's all ready to go. It's just a matter of doing the actual plumbing part, but we wouldn't have to tear up any of the flooring.
This is on the northeast somewhere. And tie-in with septic?
If we did the bathroom.
But if they stub it in, they'll have, they'll at least just, they're not going to tie it in.
They won't tie it in.
Stick it outside the building, tie on later.
Yep.
Sorry, Carl, I interrupted you.
Do we have live water in that area right now?
No, the proposal had it pulling from softball. From over by the softball.
I thought we brought wat- live water across the field.
We did. We have it across, and there's a spigot there for the visitor's side. And there was something about the pressure and the size and all that kind of stuff that-
And let's leave the turf alone?
That the best, that the best option-
It's a pretty small line that runs underneath.
Because I thought they could, you know,
Tap into that.
I thought they could tap into the concession stand, like over by the bathrooms, and I was told, no, that wouldn't be the, you know.
Be better.
Everybody that knew something knew it was better to go.
Okay.
I'm just going off of what was closest. I know, right? That's why we hire the engineers.
Did we decide whether we're going up or the-
We are going, we are going up.
We're going up.
Yep, so we'll build it above.
What was the difference between up and the vents?
He didn't have an exact price, because we would, we would save some money on dirt, but then it would cost more money, because we'd have to redesign the building and put the vents in. And right now, he said, because we're bringing in so much quantity, he's getting his dirt from Luke Ogden. Because it's such a, a large amount of dirt he has to bring in, he's getting it at a price. So you cut your dirt in half, your price is still going to go up, you know, it'll still save you some. So he didn't have an exact amount, but he said we really wouldn't save a whole lot. And I don't know that, you know, to save five thousand dollars, that's really, if that's really even worth it. Whereas this way, we know it's, you know, secure. If we ever decide we wanted to heat it, or, you know, do anything like that, we could, because we wouldn't have the, the flood vents on the bottom. And so for now, it's just going to be storage. Um, district, you know, district storage and our next step will be just, you know, we'll get some kind of gate system to block off a portion of it, so that it can be locked. So, you know, in bad weather, things like that, our visiting teams could go in there at halftime, you know, uh, to get out of the weather if we wanted to. But it would just be in, that part would just be an open space. But then the storage part would be locked, so they couldn't get to it.
Is it going to be like just open? Or is it going to be a building?
A building.
With like doors and stuff?
There'll be one overhead door, so we can drive things in, and then one walk-in door.
Okay. And I assume the drive-in door will be facing west? Or north?
I don't know.
North, I think.
I think the building's running-
They're going to have to ramp it up.
That I can't answer.
It's too bad we don't have that big pile of brown field over there.
I kind of agree, agree with Luke on this, you know. In, in five years, the cost will increase. I mean, whatever, whatever we need now, I think we should make it a little bigger in five years, when we need more storage space, or when we need a bathroom. I think this is probably a good compromise. The lower cost, and then if we can do a change order to get, get the water at least an option.
Be stubbed out.
Yeah.
The, the driving door will be on the west.
But we'll be going pick that one.
I'll move to approve the contract with Dries Enterprises for Brownfield Storage Building for one hundred thirty-one thousand one ninety-seven.
Second.
Right, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? She carries. Thank you. All right, move to item E, which is, uh, discussing our book study. So a- as far as facilitating this, uh, I, I, I just thought it'd be good to go through and we can go around and at least share some observations, you know, as we went through. I don't know, Jen, if you had any other thoughts of kind of how you want to go through the book or anything?
Good with me?
So we, you know, just for me, for me, I, I found it really interesting, and I'm, I'm excited to see how you implement some of this as you're moving forward, because I know you're using this with your team uh, to go through. I, a couple of spots that jumped out to me, uh, that I thought were really interesting was the leading lagging indicators aspects of this thing on how I think as just, it's human nature to look at the lagging indicator aspect. And it's really hard to figure out and focus on the leading indicator and figure out what really is the, the driving force. I don't know, that one to me was a that was really interesting as I read through this.
I like, one thing that, like, they made several instances, like stick to this, like verbatim, like don't veer from it because-
Don't create your own path.
Yes, because that's where people get in trouble and plenty of examples of that, like-
Yeah.
And mostly because of what you said, looking at lag indicators versus what can we do to-
Exactly.
And from a accountability standpoint, it was, it was nice, and they touched upon the, you know, your whirlwind, recognizing it, but yet still, you know, still pushing forward to get, you know, let's get caught up then next week.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, um, the section on lead, lead measures, the thing that stood out was that it, it, they need to be able to be influenced by the group. I think, um, you know, as I read this book, there were some examples of schools, the, you know, District Three Forty-two or whatever, maybe that was the grocery store, sorry. Uh, the, the district where, you know, everything was kind of falling apart. Um, you know, I think, um, in a school setting, we, we like it, and then you begin to implement this, and then we see what the teachers say, and once they realize that they have power to, to actually say, the, these are the important things. I'd be really curious to see what they, what their feedback is, once they understand how all the pieces come together. And then how are we going to create a dashboard? And then how are we going to create a dashboard, you know, for, for this and?
Well, that, yeah, that's an important one. That was one of the other areas is in the approach, where it listed there's different approaches of how you do this, whether you focus on a district, whether you focus on a, a building, whether, you know. I don't know, I'm curious, Jen, your thoughts of how your, which approach you're planning on taking or, or kind of your thoughts around that.
Yeah, I, I go back and forth to trying to figure out, there's one thing I wanted to, I'm going to get back to that. But there, there was a quote in here that talks, there will always be more good ideas than there is capacity to execute. And I feel like that's something in education we do. We, we try something and then we like see a squirrel and we go do that. Or we, you know, and so I think staying the course and going back to what Rudy talked about, you know, we've been invested in this letters training. And we've got to make sure we stay the course for that. And what are, are we getting, you know, if we're not seeing the results, we still have to examine. Don't throw letter, you know, don't throw something out. Let's look at it and look at the indicators, look at our habits and our things within that, our behaviors. But I, I loved that one because I do think we're squirrel chasers in education and we're always wanting to try the new initiative or whatever it is. And so we've got to stay the course and that compelling scoreboard goes back to kind of what Jaclyn was talking about, our building plan. Sometimes I feel like it's so large, teachers forget kind of what, what are we trying to do? What was our goal? Do they even know it? And so getting that compelling scoreboard, so then coming up to, to what Steve had asked about, you know, a building or a, or a district. I feel like my gut is that the building is going to be more of a compelling scoreboard to a teacher. If our goal is that every third grader is going to be on track and we say that's our district goal or whatever it is, you know, what does that mean to a high school social studies teacher, you know? So I feel like we have to keep those goals somewhat close to the, you know, the wildly important goals, somewhat close to where our teachers are to keep them engaged too. So.
Yeah, that, that's interesting because I, I agree, I agree with that. I think part of it is it depends what your wildly important goal is. If it's something that is district wide, that every teacher, whether you're a high school teacher or a, or an elementary teacher, you can resonate with, that's a different.
Right.
Depends on where your focus is.
Yeah.
But knowing where our district is, I think it feels like, yes, you're going to be more.
Yeah.
Building focused, because you might have different situations or different focus areas in each one, so that's.
And I thought when Rudy was talking about engagement too, like if you could somehow incorporate to where the kids know the scoreboard too. And, and some of them aren't going to under, you know, they're not going to comprehend what, but you're, the older kids at Lambert are going to understand like, hey, we're, we're a part of this thing too. And get that engagement out of the students, just an extra piece of engagement out of them too.
I think that makes sense. I think as long as you tie them together so that you don't get into the, we have a thousand goals to focus on. Long as it, because it's, what's my personal wig to support the grade which supports the building? But yeah, I think that's, that's, that can be really powerful. Cause I, I did like, I think I saw that section here somewhere where it, I, I think as you go through this next, you know, nine, 12, 18 months that you're going to go through and be able to tie your vision, strategy to these wildly important goals and get it to, I think that whole laddering up effect is going to be really important for everybody to understand why these things are so important.
And I think some of it too is going to be how we set it up with our teachers too, because you think about their contributions to the wildly important goal. Starts with habits. Like if we know that we have to do these things in order to get this, we really have to focus. Our attention is on these things that you said we needed to do every day in order, and then we'll get there because we focused on doing these things and setting what those habits are. And I think about like if we, if it is something with literacy that we do, you think about the title teachers, what does their role look like? And even me as a superintendent, I was thinking about, you know, if there's a literacy goal at Lambert, we think about engagement, what can I do to support that? Well, maybe my goal is that I'm in the classrooms and using this walkthrough form to give feedback to teachers on what I see that's directly supporting their goal. And those are my actions and my ownership to help them achieve that.
Awesome.
One of the comments in there was, you know, it's something that we all know, but we got to keep, you know, in the front of our mind is, in order to achieve something that you've never achieved, you're going to have to do something that you're not doing.
Changing human instinct and human behavior.
Yes.
Cause I think that's, you know, getting that buy-in. And I think the, the one quote that I highlighted in there, emergencies happen, but execution continues, like make it a point that it's that accountability part of things too.
Yeah.
Yeah, you might have an emergency, but.
It's not contingent on.
Yes, yes.
Staying consistent with your meetings and.
Yep.
And that compelling scoreboard will help like revisiting that. Yeah, that's part of every team meeting is looking at, yeah.
John, you any thoughts?
I'm a little concerned about the buy-in from teachers and Jen just talked about it. Every time you turn around, I'm sure the teachers are going to say, this is something that, this is just something that we got to do. And like screw, oh, we did this that time, we did this this time. What are they going to do next month? What thing's going to happen?
Yeah.
And they, in the book had talked about, people are just so busy day to day and teachers are especially busy with just getting what they need to get done. What Rudy expect from them, what other principals expect from them. It's just like, why are you putting this on me to make me, it more work for me? And it's, to me, it's, it's really, I think, what is a wildly important goal? Let's define what is a wildly important goal to a teacher. Is it discipline? Is it pay? Is it academic success? There's a lot of different goals that people are looking at. And I'm just wondering, you know, I've had a little bit of experience with this, you know, I'm not a big fan of Covey. I'm not a big fan of him. We had this seven habits for successful people. We did this at our place of, place of work. And I've gone through the seminars and stuff like that. And it's just like, it's just, sometimes I think, in my case, it was management. Management looks at these things and it's like, this is just a shiny new thing. And I took a course when I was going up to Iowa about this, kind of this thing. The Western way of looking at stuff is a quarter, six months. Whereas if you look at Eastern, where, you know, Korea, China, Japan, they're looking decades down the road. And that's, you know, is our business model is what's the return on assets next month, next quarter, next year. And I think if we're going to do this, we have to look at down the road, how is this going to, what wildly important goal are we going to do? That's going to help us years from now, not six months from now. What's going to help us years from now? And we talked about a little bit before about the, the reading proficiency. To me, that's a wildly important goal. It should be the most important goal in school is to get kids to read. Cause there's millions of studies that show that kids that read do far better in school than kids that don't read. And that's to me is, should be the most fundamental thing that we do as a school. Teach kids to read. Cause it's going to help them their entire life.
Great points.
And I think that's doable. I think when, at school board convention this last November, ADM, that was their goal. They wanted, they had 25% of their K through 12 was not at a proficient level. And they wanted to go from 25 to 15% in, I think, I don't remember by when. I think it was by June of that year. And I think they got to 17 or 18. They didn't make it, but.
But right.
Eight, nine, seven, eight percent is what they got to, took off of that, so.
Yeah, I think that's the art of this project as you go forward, is getting that alignment and making sure everybody knows this is the goal and this is what we're going to focus on and making sure it's, yeah, that was one other area I highlighted was these pitfalls that they set around wildly important goals of not being focused, doing too, trying to do too much, being too broad, too aspirational, not measurable, those kind of things. So I'm, I'm excited to see as you guys go through that work, kind of where you land. That to me could be really interesting. Yeah, one other section that was actually at the end of the, of the book, which I, I found really insightful for me, is it talked about, if you do all this stuff, the, what it said is sometimes the missing ingredient, which is the characteristics to be effective at this, you know.
Yeah.
Humble enough to listen and, and have open eyes, determined to drive, to, to have the drive and to not, you know, the staying power to go through it. You know, courage to take on things. And, you know, then the last word in it was love. You know, that we just have a soft touch, a personal affinity, which I know we have a lot of that around. So as I look at those characteristics, we have all of that in our district. So I'm excited as we go tackle this, that, that you guys are going to be really successful. And so I, I'm glad that we read this because I think what it'll help us, and I'm actually glad that we read it and are having some discussion today as you're really embarking on this, because I think it gives us a foundational knowledge of what you're talking about as we're reading, you know, building reports or your report, that we're going to understand what a wildly important goal means and what leading and lagging in measures and why you care about those and why scorecards are important, those kind of things.
And really, you know, I was thinking after, John, you were talking about down the road and that, they did mention, this can be down the road, because you can always look at doing things in this method too, you know. Yeah, once you hit this goal, okay, let's go to the next one.
What's the next?
I don't disagree about looking way into the future.
We got to focus in the future.
If you have this guideline to set those goals, it's a different way of doing it.
Setting it and getting alignment focused is really what I loved about it.
Then you move on to the next one using the same.
Yep, approach.
Yeah, it was rule four was, you know, all goals need to have a finish line, X to Y and by when.
Yep. I think that'll be really great.
Now you got a report back from your conference.
I know, yeah.
This week?
Put a lot of eggs in that conference basket next week.
Next week.
Yep.
Exciting. Good book.
Yeah, yeah.
I thought it was really.
We read this as an admin team. I don't know if you guys have any quick statements you want to throw out there as your thoughts for the building level within it or?
Sorry, I'm really excited about this work. One of the things that we talked about at BLT, our building leadership team meeting, and they're reading the book over the summer as well. And I think one of the most important things is that they really own it and it comes from them. Because I think that's when we're going to see the results on our scoreboard. So yeah, I just, I, having them get into it and like taking this next year, it's going to take a little bit more time, but to go, you know, we're going to go slow to go fast. And I think it's, I'm really looking forward to that focus for our buildings. Because we talked a lot about like, we have these three goals and we have all these action steps. And they're really overwhelmed on a daily basis, not just teaching, but trying to keep up with all of that. So I think that that slimming those down and really having that focus is going to help our teachers feel a lot better too.
All right.
Any other thoughts? Great. Thanks, everybody. Good discussion. All right, we'll move on to item F, our travel request for Lynette to attend the national conference.
Are you leading it?
I don't think so. I don't know if I'm on that level yet.
I'll make the motion to approve the travel request to send Lynette to Texas.
Oh, second.
My, my rental car is from Texas, just on a side note. So I'm halfway, I'm halfway there.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried. Item G is approval of the travel request for the high school music department on their 26 New York City trip.
Yeah, this would just get the ball rolling to let them.
Start fundraising and.
So funded.
So funded.
1,500 is the goal before.
So they're just going to start their fundraising efforts now for next year.
Yep.
Yes.
And then do we, remind me, do we, does, do chaperones, then they pay their own amount as well if it's, or is it fundraising?
I believe they do, right?
They do.
That's all, okay.
I think it's maybe, maybe a little bit more for chaperones. So there's a commitment. If you want to go, it's not just the money, it's the fundraising.
You have to do.
You have to raise. You, you've got to go to the concession stand a certain number of times. You've got to do this, you've got to do that. And then as they collect money, as long as you meet the, at least in the past, as long as you meet the, the required signups, then the money that everyone receives is, it goes into a pool and the overall price drops down by, you know, a dollar per kid as they.
And then they all have to pay the, whatever the residual gap is.
So if you start at 1,500 and maybe, you know, every kid gets the equivalent of $200 of a, of a reduction.
Based on the fundraising that goes to.
Fundraising, that's great.
Yeah. Great.
It's a pretty big commitment for those that want to go.
Definitely. Looks like an exciting trip.
I, I move that we approve the travel request for, for New York City. Two Broadway musicals is what they say.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And I assume that means you're volunteering to chaperone as well, Carl? Is that what I read?
I, just like you, we'll find out together. Exactly. Maybe we'll both be there.
Maybe we'll both have to be there, exactly, yeah. All right, item H, approve the TAMS Whitmark Music Agreement.
I will move to approve the TAMS Whitmark Musical Agreement.
Second.
All right, motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right, and then the new phone service, approval of the new phone service.
It's 138 handsets, is that right?
Hmm, 138 lines, but they say how it works is because of the kind of service that we're getting. Some of those lines have like extra extensions that they can build off of them. So like 138 is kind of like what teachers need for an account. And then there's other lines, like the high school attendance line, the middle school attendance line. There's some other ones on top of that. I think there's 25 or something that are unlimited. Those would, those don't have all the extra features, the Zoom accounts and the calendar and all that, they're just a phone line. And so those will go in some spots, like the elevators would be some of those extra ones, because we don't need a, they need access to get out, but they don't need an unlimited line because they're used.
Hopefully never.
Hopefully never, yeah, exactly. So like, we would pay if someone had to call out, we'd pay that few minutes that they called out or something like that. But otherwise, they just sit there and, but we don't pay for an extra line because it's included in that. And because of this enterprise or this, yeah, the enterprise plan, they can opt, they can move them around, is what I'm told. Whereas we would have, if we would have went with a cheaper option, it, we would have had to pay pretty much for each line that we had. But because of this type of line, we can combo things up a little bit more. Funny thing is the, the next, there's like three tiers at Zoom. This is the highest tier. The next tier down is actually more expensive because of how we would have to do lines. Like we'd have to have more lines. To do that. And like the no frills, I didn't put this in here, but like the no frill Zoom package, like just phone service was, I don't even think it was $2,000 cheaper over three years.
Really?
It was, so like it's, you're getting a lot for that amount.
Are there any new services that comes with the package that you're excited about? I know you mentioned like teachers can dial from their cell phone.
Yeah, which is a big thing we've tried for a while with our current system. We tried it back in COVID and we added it on and it was just horrible. I, I got like three teachers attached and then it just kind of fell apart and nothing really worked right, so we gave up on it. Uh, that's a good one, the just teachers having like Zoom in general, like professional Zoom and that all of them can do unlimited calls. But that will be a huge thing for them. I'm excited to find out more about the digital signage, because we have like our signs like on the TVs, but they say that they're, it's supposed to include some of that stuff. There's some scheduling, but I, I'm not sure how much we'll use some of that. Um, I think they do background music. Lynette's really excited what she wants. Like when you're on hold and it plays like music. Yeah, so she, she's really excited about that possibility.
Could be Mr. Felderman's voice.
Yeah, that, that.
We've had it recorded for many years.
Yeah, that was like her number one, if we get a new phone service that it needs. Yeah. No, we currently don't.
So we're going to put a lot of people on hold for the entire fight.
Yeah, just the, yeah, you just got, yeah, you have that minimum, they got to, they got to be on. Yeah. Yeah, so I, just in, in general, just having kind of like an updated set, because it's, we've just kind of dragged this along to a point where it's like.
These are original, they've been around.
Yeah, the whole system, there are some, like if you, if you were ever in an office and you saw like a gray phone, like a silver phone, that's like original. That's from when I started. Yeah, yes. Sound, sound quality's going now. I'm having issues now with. Yeah, yes, sound, sound quality's going now. I'm having issues now with like new phones. I plug them in and they just won't even like connect anymore to the system. They just, they just spin and spin and I can't get anything to go with them. Like it's just the, I can't, the server needs a big upgrade if I was going to like, in general, something needed to happen. And just kind of doing a service like this seems like a better option than.
Oh, Cat, Cat six connectors? I mean, these are networking.
Yep, yeah, so they'll all plug into the networks and the, and they'll be powered by our network switches. So they just plug them in and they should just, once they're assigned to a person, which is kind of where our system is now, they can take the phone and they'll just plug the phone into their room. Kind of the other nice thing they had said in there that's like, we have people like Chad Sellers and Alisa Neal and Seth Harms and Jason Guyer, who all have like multiple classrooms and so they have like a phone and, oh, you're trying to get ahold of them, oh, we'll call his, his office phone. Or if he's not there, call his phone in his shop or something like that. And so this one, like they can all be set to the same extension. So you call Seth Harms and.
All the phones will ring.
All the phones will ring and then he can pick it up.
Tie into our like emergency response system where we're able to.
There's supposed to be something in there. It doesn't tie into like our new crisis go stuff, but there's supposed to be a way in there that we can actually set, which was a recommendation by some, something, that we can set up like a map. And actually you can like pinpoint an extension to a room. So that way that the, when you call 911.
Know where the call came from.
You would know where it came from. Cause, oh, that was something that happened at, uh, one of the buildings, a kid was screwing around or something, called. And they were saying how confusing it is on their end because it doesn't tell them.
They just don't came from the school.
Where it came from. And so this will, you're, you have to kind of work and get it configured, but you can kind of create maps and that kind of say where calls are coming from. Based off the extension.
This is a three-year.
Three-year. Which they both were three-year agreements.
I'll move to approve the purchase of the new phone s- service.
Second.
With Zoom.
With Zoom, I was going to say clarify which one. Uh, motion a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? She carried. Thanks for all the work on that, Joe. All right, comments from the public. Make comments, we'll move on. Our future board meeting, kind of prep meeting, January.
Got it, it's in my calendar.
So I don't need to send you a reminder of the.
It's helpful to get them though.
It is.
Just saying.
You can still send it to me, but yes, it's in there.
Like when an awards night is and stuff like that.
All right, well, thanks for the discussion tonight, everybody. It's good. We have a motion adjourned.
So moved.
Second. Go ahead. He got, he got me, Lynette.
She clicks. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thanks, everybody.